After we all sit?
What?
Oh.
You're sitting.
Okay. Just waiting to use the men's room.
That's right. I don't like these binders.
Let's call this to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, let me announce for the public that this meeting is being recorded by Saugus Community Cable Television. If anyone else is recording the meeting, would you please announce it? Seeing none, we do have a quorum. I do want to apologize for Ms. Meredith. She was unable due to prior commitment to attend the meetings this week, but she does -- she will receive copies and watch them when she returns. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the superintendent and just emphasize again, these presentations, preliminary budget presentations, are being made to the superintendent. We have, as a school committee, have always been or recently continued to be invited to the presentations to get a better understanding as to what the each department and schools in the reasoning behind the additional requests. So we do appreciate being at the table, so.
I appreciate you being here, and thank you, Madam Chair. And I also, too, since obviously being a new superintendent, I have a lot of respect for this process and the time in the meetings that we've had with the school leaders and curriculum team and special ed director. We are, I think we're in a place, what I can say about what we've vetted so far, is that every -- everything that's asked for in this, in the budget, has been fully vetted. It has been, there's a lot of work that has gone in, and you'll see some old items and some new ones, but without further ado, I'll get into my synopsis of it. So basically, last year's approved budget was $26 million point three dollars, and the priorities of improving teaching and learning have not changed at all. In fact, new regulations and compliance issues have facilitated us expanding upon those. We still provide adequate service for students with disabilities, and we meet regulatory compliance and educational reform mandates, and the Saugus Public Schools are safe and they are secure. But what we plan to change this year, and we've already started with this, and again, my hat's off to my building principals in particular, with trying to speak to all of the municipal stakeholders and business stakeholders as well, and really work together to prioritize and fund the best educational opportunities we can for our students. So it's incumbent upon us as the leadership team to continue and augment the strong collaboration we already cultivate with the town manager, police and fire departments, TPW, and local business partners, to ensure that we continue to spread our wings in the community, but also that we capitalize on the rich human capital of those people and their perspective and of their resources and of their generosity to share those resources and insights. And personally, I'd like to thank all of those department heads for the warm reception they've given me as someone new to Saugus. So the school committee's annual budget is generally built on the premise of focusing on teaching and learning and improving that for all students in the Saugus Public Schools, adhering strictly to the federal mandates I spoke about, and making sure that all of the capital items, all of the technology infrastructure in the Saugus Public Schools benefit our students so that they realize the 21st century education that they deserve. Although we're proud of Saugus Public Schools' recent elevation to the Level Two status, very proud of that, we still continue to work hard, and we know that there's much more work to do. We know how, that you cannot rest on those laurels, and in fact, we're looking to improve the schools on a daily basis and every meeting that we have constantly. So some of the work that we have to do within the district, we have structural changes within the district, including updating the SOI for Saugus High School, also looking at the labs and as they were spoken about with our recent for NEAS compliance, improving building security throughout the entire district, and also looking at a variety of counseling and intervention strategies so that we have successful steps in place so that we ensure that all students can learn and learn at their full potential. So even though we anticipate, we anticipated the decrease in the RTT, the eventually phase out of the RTT monies and the decline in Title One and Title Two, we know that it's a tough economic downturn, and the transience of our population has increased, and we've had reductions to some McKinney-Vento and the circuit breaker as well. All of these challenges have, we have to, we have to budget for as best we can. We can't always predict them, but we have to make sure that we are putting the students first. So despite the challenges and changing landscape of the curriculum and accountability, we remain focused on the instructional core and the sanctity of the progress that can be made between teacher and student with the right curriculum and fertile ground. And I always want to inform particularly not only the, not so much the committee, but the general public, and I know there's a lot of viewing public at these events, as I've been told, and what we work on, on a weekly basis as an educator, in our educational leadership team, is to stay true to the educational mission of the district, to educate and challenge and empower students to be lifelong learners and achieve excellence with integrity in the 21st century as productive, caring, and contributing members of society. So with that, I welcome our first contestant, so to speak, okay, to the floor, or we're gonna have Lisa Howard come up, and she's gonna speak about the special ed.
Sure. So this is my first time doing this?
If you wouldn't mind, Lisa, come into the --
Oh, come to the next desk.
I'm sorry about that.
It's a hot seat. Yep.
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is the first time that I have done a budget presentation for Saugus Public Schools. So I took a look a little bit at what was done last year and used that sort of as a template, as well as working with the principals. So I handed in my worksheet that shows pretty much what I would be looking for. The first thing was an increase of a full-time ETL for the district. It was something that was recommended last year as well, and I still do see the need for that. Presently, we have a full-time chairperson at the vets managing 110 students, students with special needs. We have a full-time chairperson at the high school managing a little bit over 100 students there, full-time chairperson at the middle school managing over 100 students there, and the, at the ballot, your early childhood coordinator also serves as the ETL in that building, overseeing about 25 students on caseload plus any of the early intervention students that come in. And then we have another part-time position overseeing the Weybright, Oaklandvale, and Lynnhurst schools, and the total amount of special needs students among those three schools is about 85. I see the numbers trending upwards from last year, and the management and the role of the ETL of overseeing the compliance issues as well as eligibility, which was something that was recognized in the coordinated program review as an area that needed really to have some work. I mean, we've begun a lot of work on eligibility determination and retraining folks on the law and what constitutes identifying students as students with special needs. So increasing that position to one more full-time person, I believe, would allow us to really focus in on narrowing down our numbers and identifying only students who are definitely in need of specialized instruction. There's also 33 students out of district that each one of the current ETLs provides oversight for some of those programs. I have taken on the role, the share of attending as many of those as I can, with the sole intention of looking at the programs and making sure they are sufficient to meet the needs of the students, and if there is a trend of students that we have either leaving the district or that are out, identifying that population of students to see what we could build back here in Saugus Public Schools to bring kids back into the community. The second item on my list is a carryover from last year's recommendation, and it was an assistant coordinator of pupil personnel. And I envisioned that particular position in a, really in a dual role, but the primary purpose would be to assist me and the ETLs with full program development within the district. Just for the short four months that I've been here, I see that there is a trend in certain populations of students that have to leave Saugus Public Schools to go to out-of-district placements, the purpose being there is nothing within the district or not a sufficient placement within the district to meet the needs of some of our higher-need students, so that person could certainly, across the whole district, assist with developing programs and bringing kids back. The third thing on my list was the tuition line, which is something I deal with on a daily basis, just like transportation, and I've done a rough estimate based on the students that we have and the cases that we have pending in the district. When I came aboard in September, there were about four cases that were hanging over from last year that had not been settled. Of those four cases, we still have two left that we're working on, and then with the in-district kids, I'm sorry, with the in-district population that we have and the out-of-district population, I gave you the figure that we need, which also includes a 3.5% increase. The reason I put the 3.5% increase in the overall tuition was because the Operational Service Division has yet to set the rates for the next school year. So I'll give you an example, the May Center, if the tuition at the May Center this year is $65,000, which is a number that I'm just throwing out there, Operational Service Division typically would increase that to about 3.5% for next year, if at all. Sometimes they freeze the rates, but we can't count on that freeze. I've also looked at the students that we have out of district, and of those out-of-district placements, which programs are up for program reconstruction, which means that the state has given the green light for those particular schools to raise their rates beyond the reasonable cost, and they have to submit something to the state to say that they need to increase their tuition by an estimate of $20,000 for operational purposes. Those are red flags, so we sort of know which of those placements, so I've incorporated that into that overall cost as well. The extended school year is something that students are in, students who have IEPs are entitled to if it is written into their IEP, so those students who would otherwise substantially regress over the summer without a continuation of programming during the summer. It's not exactly what they receive during the school year, but it is enough service so that those students would not lose everything that they had gained from September till June. I've begun working with the ETLs and the principals on taking a look at which students actually qualify. I'm not sure how much work has been done on that in the past, but we are really looking into evaluating kids over Christmas break, February break, and April vacation to make a determination whether or not an extended school year is definitely necessary. The ETLs are finding that to be some fascinating work. It's a little bit new for some of the special ed teachers, but it's the data that's necessary in order for the school to fund those programs, and we're looking a little bit at revamping the staffing and some efficiencies in speech-language OT and PT over the summer. I don't believe there was a line item for the extended-year program in the past, and so I'm recommending that it's a known cost to the school district, so I'm recommending that there be a line item for that. I've had plenty of time to meet with principals and ETLs over the past four months, talking about increase in students, transitions, kids moving from one building to the next, and in doing so, we have a pretty good estimate at what we will require for programming in each building. One of the main things I did when we first got here was met with high school staff and looked at the alternative slash success program at Saugus High School to see how we could better use monies that were being filtered into that program. We were able to, with the hard work of the staff at the high school, bring back about $130,000 to the school district, if that's a rough estimate, of the amount of money we were able to save. Again, just sort of rolling back to the additional ETL and/or coordinator, these are some of the programs that if you, if you create them, they do save you money. We created some efficiencies with the classroom and the staffing, and we were able to pretty quickly bring back a large amount of money. So in working with the staff and looking at the programs that we need for next year and the increase in student enrollment, homeless population, because some of our students that come in that are homeless are also kids with special needs, I would support the increase in teaching staff that's being recommended by the individual principals. I could go through every one of those, but the building principals are also gonna do them, but I think it's important to note that that was a collaborative effort based on actual student enrollment and student needs. So number six is in my tours of the school, schools when I first got here and looking at the Weybright, the Oaklandvale, and the Lynnhurst, and looking at where we were servicing students, what space we were servicing them in, looking at enrollment and the increasing enrollment, even since I have come aboard, I would also support the request, if it is so to be, of portables or more space, if I could build bigger schools. That would be beautiful, but it is definitely, there are definitely three buildings, in my opinion, that were very tight on space. I have some concerns about compliance. I've worked with the principals on that and the ETLs about where we're actually servicing students for speech-language OT, PT, and in some cases, actual small group classes taking place and where those are being held. Principals have been very supportive in sort of restructuring if there is a class or a service that is taking place in a spot in the building that the Department of Ed wouldn't give its blessing to. We have worked on that. My concerns are with the increasing enrollment. Now, when I say enrollment, I mean of special needs students and identification of those students. We're sort of busting at the seams. And then transportation, which is a daily struggle with me, looking at the cost of transportation, Paula and I are really looking at that sort of daily between the company that we use to transport students as well as the homeless transportation costs and really going after those costs and seeing how we can efficiently cut those down. Eventually, purchasing vehicles of our own is my, my dream and my request, but until then, I would recommend that we fund those lines appropriately and to meet probably the projection of what we're gonna have by the end of this year is gonna be similar to what we will have next year. And so far, that's it. So I will entertain any questions.
Certainly. Thank you. Regarding the extended, extended-year program, if we find that there are students that wouldn't qualify for that, but still the parents feel that it would be beneficial, is there a way that if we're running the program, they can still attend for a fee, like we run the other summer program?
Sure. So that, when I, when I came in, I quickly realized that there were two separate summer programs. There was an enrichment program, and then there was also the extended-year program. I have some experience in working with an extended-year program where we also incorporated a fee for service, so there were some students, we were offering reading tutorial and math tutorial to keep students who would otherwise regress over the summer up to par with their reading and math, and we would, potentially, we're gonna be offering that for a fee for parents to pay sort of short money to have their children involved if they didn't qualify, but they wanted to access that service. It's really not a moneymaker, it's more of a paying for the staff, but you know, it's something that in my experience, parents love, and it's cheaper than going out and hiring a one-to-one tutor. And typically, they'll work on the math packets or the reading packets that are sent home for summer work that the parents sometimes have difficulty with.
And I don't know if I should direct it at you, the superintendent, but are we planning on a summer program, an enrichment program for the summer, because we haven't heard anything on that yet, for regular ed students? Typically, they integrate and they've said in the past that's been beneficial.
It has been. So the program, if you want me to jump in, Mike, I will, but the program that we, that Mrs. Carney ran last year, she has let us know this year that she's not available to do that, so we put some feelers out to see if there is anyone who is interested in picking that up and running with that program. And you're right, there is, there has been a cross where sometimes some students with special needs would attend that, and then they would also be able, because it's in the same building, to access speech and language and OT and PT, or whatever needs they had during the day. So the combination of the two programs was quite successful. So I'm hoping, and I know Mike is hoping, that somebody will step up to the plate and take over that regular ed portion of the program, so we're in the very early stages of getting that running. It is January.
Got that news.
Yeah, you know.
Is there a timeline when you find out when the students qualify for the, for the program?
We have a rough, rough estimate based on the students who went last year. It's usually pretty, pretty much the same. Right now, we're in the process of getting all of the numbers put together so that we can look at staffing, what we'll need for staffing. The students who are in self-contained classrooms during the school year and certain programs within the district, those are known, so we know their programs need to run. Setting up the dates and the times is something that the ETLs and I are working on, just as of last Friday, trying to come up with a creative way to give teachers a break, because typically, the people who are running the summer program are also teachers in the school, so to give them a break during the summer, we're looking at the weeks and how we could run them and perhaps break them up a little bit, a little bit different than what's been done here in the past.
Thank you. And a question?
A couple of questions.
Mr. Kowalski.
On your item number one, presently, there are three full-time and two part-time ETLs.
Correct.
I'm looking at the budget request, page 22, that you might not have, and I'm looking at halfway down, ETL teachers, is that the same positions that you're talking about?
What line item is it, please?
About the, it's 231-502.
Yes.
That's the same position?
Correct.
Okay. According to this, we have two. You're saying we have three.
So one of, full-time, you mean?
Yeah.
One of the full-time ETLs is paid, I believe, out of the 240 grant?
That's correct.
Which is the special ed entitlement grant? So that salary is embedded in that grant.
Okay. And so would you anticipate that grant again next year?
I do. I always anticipate grants. Unfortunately, sometimes the state doesn't always agree with us with the amount of money, but yes, the federal entitlement grant is a pretty consistent, consistently funded grant that most PPS directors in the Commonwealth depend on as a major funding source.
And is it still a split position at the ballot? The principal is also an ETL?
That's correct.
And is that considered one of the two-part-time people that you're referring to?
That's correct.
So that's not an addition?
That is not.
Okay. And in doing some rough estimates, just for special education alone, you're looking for an increase of $856,000 roughly, right?
Depends, I'm not sure what you're referring to when you're talking about the numbers.
Well, on page 23 of that same book, the next page, if you minus out the budget request of $4,039, minus $3,283, I get an increase of 856, roughly.
That's correct.
Okay.
The district alone is nearly $300,000.
Right. The increase in out-of-district brings you up a little bit there.
Do we have a full complement of the nurses and therapists now? I know we were, we were struggling with getting everybody. We're set?
We do. Right now, we're fully staffed, if you compare it to last year's staffing and what was requested, what was in the budget for last year, all of those positions have been filled.
You have a good feeling that they'll be staying on?
The people themselves?
Yeah.
I think so. I mean, I've done a lot of work with, with staff surrounding projections for next year. I hope so. You know, coming into this district, I did not know a single person. I am more than pleased with the quality of the special educators and therapists and paraprofessionals that I have come across. I'm hoping that every single one of them stay. There's some very strong people here in this district, and I think with the communication that I'm providing them with and the professional development opportunities and the support that they're receiving right now, the feedback that I'm getting from staff is that they feel supported and they feel like they're being heard, and they feel like we're working on the composition of classes and changing some programs to meet the direct needs of kids, and I think that's pumping people up a little bit. It is. And because of that, I do hope that we are able to retain people. We just gotta keep that going, you know?
A couple of other questions on the last item, seven, transportation.
Yes.
On page 22, you have sped transportation of 220, 220, and 220, straight across the board. So you're not, I mean, you're saying you're looking for an increase, but yet you're not looking for an increase.
It's because the balance is charged to a grant, so as long as the, as the grant funding remains constant, then that number will remain constant.
So ideally, what I would like to have happen is the grant itself does not require me to write in the amount of money that I have to project for transportation, because in freeing up the monies in that grant, and again, it's tied to the special ed entitlement grant, in decreasing the cost of transportation, if we can down the line, or if we have to increase it, I'm imagining I'm gonna have to go back to the entitlement grant. I write that grant in June of every year based on the needs of the school district. The more money I have to embed in that grant for such things like transportation, the less creative I can become across the district with what I do with that money. So ideally, I'd like there to be, you know, less money having to be pulled out of that grant, and again, with some of the proposals that I've recently begun to talk about with staff and with the school committee surrounding transportation, it's my hope that I'll be able to lessen that particular line. And again, we're not 100% sure. Transportation is pretty much on the same par as it was last year, as I look at the numbers per, that we're spending by month with the transportation. with the transportation company that we use, it's basically the same as it was last year. Some work needs to be done with transportation, and I'm working pretty closely with the transportation company around changing routes and the charges when we have more than one child on a vehicle, and also working with parents surrounding transportation needs. It's a very touchy subject, and we can typically have more than one child on a vehicle. So, you know, there's some past practice that needs to be worked on, but with transportation and creating some more efficiencies there, and that has begun.
One other question, the item two about this assistant coordinator. What do you anticipate a salary to be?
Probably about $65,000, I would say. We would want, you know, at the very least, a master's level, five-plus years' experience as an ETL or a quasi-administrator would be my thought. And based on the recommendation from last year, which came out of the coordinated program review, the direct result of the number of students that were out of district, and sort of the pockets of people that are out of district, and then the clusters of people that are out of district. So there seemed to be a lack of program development. And I think that that particular person could certainly help at the ground level with that on a daily basis.
So you're looking for someone that also has experience in curriculum development, or?
Certainly. They would have to.
Madam Chair, excuse me. In your planning of the budget for this year, next year, have you looked at the, to make sure that in the budget is for that 18 to 22 program that we're looking for? Is that made in there?
Yeah. And that's something that we didn't necessarily need to add a physical body to, because based on my estimation and looking at the programs at the high school, students that are presently there, students that are moving up from grade eight, and the composition of the life skills class that already exists there, working closely with Dawn Trainor and looking at the staff at the high school and how we can sort of reorganize the program.
Okay.
So that is not lost at all. It's one of the priorities.
Good. Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to welcome Belmonte Middle School Principal Carrie Robbins to come up and speak about her budget. Please.
It's number nine.
Number nine, thank you. Saves me time.
Oh, thanks, Brendan. Thank you. I would like to thank our school building council for their time and efforts thus far this year. Their dedication to Saugus public schools, Belmonte in particular, is greatly appreciated. Also, the staff at Belmonte continues to be passionate about what they do, which has allowed our students to continually show growth, which is the ultimate goal in education. I'm just going to quickly review the six objectives in our school improvement plan that we submitted to you. The first objective is around internal CPI gaps. The goal is to have the targets for all students and students, especially in the high-needs subgroup in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. The second objective is to strengthen the overall sense of the physical and emotional safety for the staff and students. So in that objective, we're focusing on the security in the building as well as the social-emotional curriculum that we're looking to implement into the student's schedule. The third objective is to identify common assessments to be piloted as the district determine measures across all departments. That's something we've been focusing on this year and actually will continue to focus on tomorrow in our half-day. Objective four, to continue to enhance the use of technology in the classrooms. Right now, we actually, over Christmas break, were able to install 21 BrightLinks in the academic classes, but, and the teachers are really using them and excited about them as well as the kids. But we do have some, still some finishing touches we need to do in some of the classrooms. Objective five talks about the staff utilizing their team time effectively to support the needs of students, to focus on curriculum and instruction, and to share best practices. So currently, in the middle school schedule, our middle school teachers have three periods throughout the six-day rotation to particularly focus on curriculum, data, and students. And objective six is something that I will be doing in coordination with the elementary principals as well as Mr. Hashem, to really focus in on the incoming sixth-grade families and outgoing eighth-grade families. We're looking to focus on those transitions. So to implement some more transition time for the fifth-grade students as well as their parents, and then to support that as well with when our eighth graders leave and head up to the high school. So just some highlights in the budget. For staffing, Lisa had just spoken about special education. So at the Belmonte Middle School, we currently have three sub-separate programs. One of those programs has a, has a, the high population of students, and we still have some students currently that will eventually be placed in there. So I'm looking to add an additional teacher and paraprofessional into that program. We also are going to be creating a fourth sub-separate program that I will need an additional teacher for. In our mainstream classes, where most of our special education students are, right now, I don't have two in the eighth grade. So I have one special ed teacher to both teams. And this particular eighth-grade class that we currently have is tiny, so it works. Next year, all three classes will be at least at 230 students. So in order to meet the goals and objectives on those students' IEPs, I do need an additional special education teacher. So for staffing, I'm looking for three full-time special education teachers and three full-time paraprofessionals. I'm also requesting that we reinstate the one full-time custodian that we haven't been able to reinstate the past two years. Last year, we were able to get away with that during the construction project because so many areas of the school were shut off. But this year, the entire school is open, and we're certainly using every inch of it. And the night shift really needs an additional custodian to make sure that with the renovation project, we're able to maintain all of the vast improvements that we've had done. So that's, for staffing, that's all the Belmonte is looking for. I think it is important to note that the current staffing that I do have is needed in order to maintain the current schedule. So if I were to lose any current staff, it would greatly affect how the middle school operates and actually the classification of it being an actual middle school. In technology, we are, next year, rolling out, well, this year, actually, we're doing two Pilot Park groups. But next year, we'll be opening the building with having to assess the kids using Park in math and in English Language Arts. So you'll notice in the budget that we're looking for a minimum of at least four classrooms set of Chromebooks and carts. More importantly, though, not just to focus on one assessment that we do a year, the teachers are desperately craving the use of technology in the classrooms. Kids really need access to the computers immediately to do a lot of our online work that we have and to get them to really be true 21st century learners and to have those classrooms provided so that they're able to maintain the pressures of progressing in school like the similar communities around us. We also do need six more BrightLinks to continue with our focus of really creating strong, strong lifelong learners. Like to continue with the Discovery Education subscription that we're currently using, that the kids are really getting a lot out of, and the teachers are really able to use a lot of their pre-AP strategies with that technology piece, which is allowing our kids to really challenge themselves and be pushed harder and harder, which will eventually increase our honors enrollment, which is always a goal. We are requesting 13 Elmo cameras to, for classrooms. We do need, but here, we'll talk a little bit about this, but to replace the computers in our, we only have one computer lab at the Belmonte, but we do need to replace those computers. And although the Belmonte has gotten lots of new, really pretty amazing, security, there are areas that we still really need to focus on. So we're looking for some additional monies for security. Textbooks. We're actually creating two new courses, a minimum of two new courses at the middle school. So we're going to have an honors Spanish class in eighth grade. So I need Spanish workbooks for all of the eighth graders. Now, next year, opening the school year, all of the eighth graders will take Spanish as their fifth academic subject. And I do need some additional books to offset the enrollment. Need a classroom set of atlases for both of the grade six social studies classes. Last year, we were able to, Mr. Woods was able to receive funding to have MCAS science workbooks. So last year was our first year, trimester three, working, having the eighth graders completely work out of those workbooks. And if you remember, in October, our MCAS scores in science did go up six points. So clearly, those work. So, but those are consumable, so we need to get them every year. We're looking for an Algebra I book for grade eight that really connects to the Common Core standards. The one that they're currently using does not do that. Right now, in sixth and seventh grade, our kids, when they're reading novels, are only allowed to read them in the classrooms because we don't have enough for them to take home. And so in order for our students to really learn how to be independent readers, they have to be able to take books home and read them. So we're looking for those. We're also creating a grade seven honors ELA course. So I need an additional set of books, too. We'll have honors on each team. So I need additional books for that new class. In our, we have a full-time reading teacher, and she's really kind of pulling bits and pieces, pieces of curriculum from all over. So we're looking to get her some true reading curriculum to really focus on literacy. And we're also looking for dictionaries, so all of our students have access to them in class. And did I leave anything out? Does anyone have any particular questions?
I have a question, actually, from another committee member regarding the wellness. Right now, you have one wellness teacher for the whole?
That's correct. So currently, she teaches, she teaches two eighth-grade wellness classes, one seventh-grade class, and then she's in the gymnasium two periods a day. So we are talking about, and we're just in the beginning of stages of this, but I am looking to add in seventh grade a course around social enrichment that would be supported with our two full-time guidance counselors. And that will certainly connect to the YRBS survey and, you know, especially in middle school, that's, the social-emotional piece has to be addressed, or the learning can't happen. So that is one of our focal points, certainly.
Do you have any questions?
Couple of questions. Kind of concerns me that we just went through an $18 million repair slash renovation of the school. We've got 23 cameras, if I'm not mistaken, and we, right now, not even into the first six months of the school year, and we're needing more security done. I kind of question, it doesn't appear to make much sense to me that we've got 23 cameras and now we need more when we just spent $18 million on that school.
I understand what you're saying. I don't want to necessarily advertise where the cameras aren't, but certainly, I can, I can let you know. I'm not sure where, I wasn't part of the conversations as to where the cameras should go and shouldn't go, but I think if I told you where they weren't, you would, you would understand that there's a need.
Because we pared that down from 60-some-odd cameras when we did a...
Yeah, there were, I mean, there were a lot of tough choices that needed to be made, just based on cost. You know, and there was no way to comprehensively put a camera everywhere where you would need one in a, in a way that would, you know, fit with the money that we had to spend on that, on cameras, frankly.
And the other thing, Park. As far as I can read in literature that I receive and people I talk to, it's still not a done deal. And philosophically, I think we should probably look at, and some districts are looking at, writing letters to the state requesting that if Park is going to cost us money, that we need to get some reimbursement from them to institute this Park thing, since it wasn't an initiative of ours. It was an initiative of Department of Elementary Secondary Education. And I think there are some school districts that are actively pursuing, going after the state to say, hey, listen, if you want us to do Park, we need some help in the technology and in the cost of the implementation of this. Am I correct?
Absolutely. Without question.
And maybe we can find some other districts that are of that same opinion and maybe piggyback with them, if that's the wish of the board, to, you know, request some kind of help in the expenses that we have to incur that aren't of our choosing, that are being forced upon us, of a system that we don't even know if it's going to be fully implemented and when.
I think it's, it is important just for the public to understand, however, that I have nine Chromebooks for 700 students. So even if Park didn't exist, I would be looking for that technology.
But aren't we looking to purchase some Chromebooks now?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
We are with the money that we've used, but the, the whole...
It serves a dual purpose. But, you know, you do want to do it at a pace that's reasonable as well and not have it be forced upon you.
I think your issue that you bring up, where a lot of other districts and superintendents in, they have banded together as we, the onslaught of the unfunded mandates. And I can look and I know, I've had discussions with a couple of area superintendents about that, and I actually attended Department of Ed meeting along with some other superintendents, as we are keeping watch of that closely. So, and I can, and we can talk at another time about that, too, but I would be open to that. And obviously, that's a committee decision.
No, I realize that we need some just for the general improvement of what you want to do. But if we're purchasing things strictly to implement Park, we need to get the message out there that we need some help from the state.
I think it's fair to say that Park is a major catalyst, you know, not just in Saugus, but around, around the state. But in terms of updating to, for the 21st century classroom...
Oh, yeah. I agree that there's some...
Definitely, the Belmonte is the last in line, in that that was our focus this year, too, to kind of bring them up, particularly with the LCD instruction on a regular basis, not just talking about testing windows and things like that. That's great. We have to have that compliance, but it's, you know, all the other days of the year, which is most of them, that they're using it actively, that we're most focused on.
And just one comment. In looking, we got a lot of information tonight added to our books, and to try and follow your personnel needs is not articulated in here to find it easy. So if you have some kind of documentation or a report that articulates that, I'd like to get a copy of that to put in our book, because it's not easy to follow along what you are asking for.
Okay. I can send an email.
I just have one quick question. And it's, with, with the textbooks, you're looking for around $50,000 in textbooks. Is there any way to integrate your technology with, like, the textbooks? I know, talking about the Chromebooks and stuff like that, is there a way to integrate that? So maybe we can get you more of that and...
Most of the, you know, new, new textbooks... Most of the, you know, new, new textbooks, really, it's the online piece that you get in the book.
Yeah.
Kind of comes with, with it.
Okay.
That's kinda how it works now.
Actually, we looked into this a few years ago, uh, going more, um, ebook.
Yeah.
Um, and actually, at the time, it was to the point where it's about, just round numbers, it was probably eighty dollars to buy ebook license, and it was like ninety-two dollars to buy the ebook license with the hard copy. So the book companies aren't giving out the CDs for like ten dollars a piece.
Okay.
However, the tide is starting to turn.
It is turning. Okay. It is turning.
And I was mentioning, in particular, with Discovery Education, they're rolling out the, um, like, the, the, the digital tech book. They're also doing that in math now. Uh, they're starting to, um, they're working on that now. The pilot might even be ready as close as next fall. So there's gonna be more and more social studies, which we, we have at the middle school now. Um, and, you know, with a combination of Chromebooks and the interactive, uh, whiteboards, it, it works, and, and the kids love it. They eat it up, uh, on top of the fact that even a lot of the, the textbook series now, I mean, the, the kids rarely use the textbooks because everything's online, and, and they're accessing a lot of the textbooks at home, uh, the online versions anyway. So I think over the course of the next several years, you know, as we get closer to, you know, a child having a computer or a one-to-one, as we get closer to that, and it will be, you know, districts in, in, I think, including Saugus, you know, will look to be adopting digital, um, curriculum because it's, it's gonna be much more cost-effective.
Thank you.
Are those available also for the, for the books, though? I mean, if, if language arts is requesting certain books for the students to read, do we have the electronic versions, or is it more cost-effective that way than having the physical book?
Well, you can get those books online, but we don't have NOOCs or iPad. We don't have readers for them.
We need to get closer to, you know, a one-to-one.
Yeah.
In terms of each child having their own device, you know, to get to that scenario. Uh, and we're not there yet.
But the ones that do and have a library card can just download it right from our local library for free, so...
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Most of those books are limited, especially when it comes to ebooks.
Oh.
Each library has to purchase a set amount of ebooks, or you'll find even Boston Library might have ten books, and once ten people check them out, they're gone.
That's it?
Yeah. And they go fourteen days.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But didn't we just, several years ago, purchase our whole grade NOOCs?
Yes.
What happened with that initiative?
They still have theirs, but we didn't get, we, we didn't get them every year. We only got them...
But I understand that it didn't work, or it didn't work out the way it was planned to work out.
Yeah, I, I...
It was expensive to buy them all, and now it's just falling flat.
Right. It was, you know, it was, it was, you know, a pilot that we were able to do once, and the kids hung on to their device, um, and were able to keep it. And, and, you know, we just, we didn't have the infrastructure of, of the books that would go with the curriculum that they could access through the NOOCs. I mean, that was really the problem. So you had kids who, um, were able to download and purchase books like they would if they purchased their own, but it wasn't integrated into the instructional program. And that's, and that's where it kind of fizzled, for lack of a better, better term.
No, they're not. The sixth graders got them and went home with them forever.
I've got a question for you. Might sound like a funny question. We kind of always focus on what we do good and what we do well. What are we doing badly? And maybe you've already, maybe I just didn't catch it. What are we doing that we're not doing well, that we need to do better? And how are we gonna approach those negative things? You know, when you go for an interview, they ask you what your weaknesses are sometimes?
Yeah.
What's our weakness and how are we gonna improve that weakness?
Um, actually, it's funny you ask that. I had a really, um, long conversation with Brendan and Frank and Jeff again today, um, around, um, changing, um, some of the academic focus in, um, I think it's kinda hard to answer this without, um, in the sixth and seventh grade, we have, um, we have five academic subjects in grade six, seven, and eight. Um, in grade six and seven, um, we have what's called a success block. So we're right now in the, um, really, really beginning stages of brainstorming how we can change, or should we change that success block to make sure that, um, we're able to focus on every single student and what their weaknesses are, and do we need more time in the day to do that, to make sure that, um, our, our students who are on the, the average to above-average cusp are, are pushed up to above-average, and, um, our students who are on that low-average, average are, are pushed up. Um, our ultimate goal is really to increase our honors enrollment because we really believe that if we open that door and offer it, more kids will, will find it. But we have to give them those tools. So we're just in the beginning stages of talking about that, but, um, my guess is, you know, we'll be opening up the middle school next year with grade six and seven looking slightly dramatically different than it currently does.
Cause in looking at this document for the proposed budget, I see a lot of stuff here for, and, you know, I'm not denigrating one, one area or another, but special ed, special ed, special ed, special ed, special ed. And the comment you made, every student.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna leave out the students that are in the middle.
No.
And you made comments to that.
No. What we, what we talked about today is...
Those success blocks that we're problem-solving every student in the sixth and seventh grade has.
Yeah.
So it's looking at how do we, um, use that time to, uh, you know, to better provide that individualized support for kids wherever they are in the continuum. If they're already proficient, how are we getting them to advanced? If they're in warning, how are we getting them, uh, to needs to improve or to proficient?
That's good. That's good.
Some of the, some of the discussions that are taking place at the high school level, and Mike's gonna speak about this, are about Saugus High School becoming a MIMZI school, uh, math, Massachusetts Math Science Initiative. Um, part of that is that the discussions that have started to take place at the high school have, have revolved around getting more kids ready for, um, the higher-level courses. And so that's triggered conversations on how do we go to the middle school and how do we get them ready at an earlier age? So that's why we've, we've started having discussions about that. We're starting to have discussions about setting our own goals privately and, and, you know, quietly about what do we wanna see our numbers look like? Like, whatever our AP is now, I think Mike will talk about it, we're talking about increasing those numbers dramatically in the next several years. Well, in order to make that happen, we've gotta prepare the students all the way back through the system.
Right.
So that's what we're, you know, so when, when, when Ms. Robbins answered your question, it is kind of, we're, we're looking at how do we more effectively prepare, you know, that next twenty-five percent? We're doing a really good job, I think, with some of our honors kids. We're doing a really good job with some of our special needs children. What do we do with that twenty-five percent? And we're trying to really promote those kids now. So we're, when I say promote, we're trying to really promote their learning. So that's what we're really focusing on.
Not all those children in Saugus are gonna be able to reach that level of advanced studies that you wanna prepare them for. We have to prepare them for what they're capable of doing within their, you know, abilities.
Right. And they always need to be challenged, too.
They're not gonna be able to go, right, exactly. But we still have to, just can't say because they're not moving into that next twenty-five, we still have to figure out how we can reach them and help them...
Absolutely.
Be prepared for their, their experience in, in high school and after high school.
Absolutely. Definitely agree with you.
Guys, why don't I red paint in the gym?
Doesn't it look great?
It really does. I'm so excited about it.
I was there last night. I'm like, whoa!
It looks like a brand-new gym.
Yeah.
A little paint does wonders.
It does. It does.
There's a lot of red.
There's a lot of red.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robbins.
Have you been in the gym?
I haven't seen it. I'm late, I said.
Next, I'd like to invite Bakir Bacerovic to the table to talk about our technology planning and some specific items that he has, uh, in mind, as well as how he's complementing, uh, you already heard some of that, the other buildings, um, you know, with the infrastructure needs that, that they've, uh, looking for.
Um, every year, we start with some goals. Uh, for this year, the goals were to, uh, continue replacing and updating aging desktops, uh, goal to increase type A computers per state definition and lower the student per computer ratio, continue district-wide wireless deployment, increase the amount of Google Chromebooks deployed to support online textbooks and upcoming PARC testing, implement Google Apps platform for elementary school students to use with the Chromebook device and collaboration with teachers, reduce paper and toner use with combination of new devices, management software, and print policy settings, introduce paperless office option to reduce printing and storing of printed documents, procure a part-time technology integration specialist to assist our staff members in integrating technology in the classroom, procure a part-time IT assistant to support our growing technology investment, maintain a technology replacement cycle plan, and continue to provide valuable training. Uh, what we've done so far is, uh, we have replaced two, two labs at the high school, AutoCAD Lab and Adobe Java Lab, uh, and, uh, procured updated software for both of them. We have, um, we've received a donation from, uh, Social Security Administration, some forty desktops, and we have replaced eight-year-old WD-27 Resource Lab at the high school. Uh, we have continued to replace all desktops where applicable with the very cost-effective end computing devices. Uh, multiple physical servers were virtualized and replaced at no additional hardware cost. We have implemented three hundred and fifty Chromebook laptops, uh, in all schools. New interactive wide-port units were deployed in most classrooms now. Wireless access was installed at the high school and middle school and is now at ninety percent of battery coverage in all schools. Google Apps, Google Drive documents and calendar is now implemented for all students, K through twelve. Uh, four high-speed internet connections are now available at the data center and serve all schools while providing redundancy and more bandwidth for multimedia-rich application support. Atomic learning platform was procured to aid staff in professional development and student learning. Technology training and data director, X2 Aspen, apps and smart projectors, Smart Board and Microsoft Office was provided as part of professional development. The use of inexpensive end computing terminals, Chromebooks, and virtual platform in our schools has improved our student per computer ratio, which has brought us below the state-recommended standard. Currently, we are at, um, high school is at one point eight students per computer, middle school is at three point oh, Weberite is one point eight, Lynn Hurst, two point one, Oakland Will is at one point nine, Veterans Memorial is two point oh, and Ballard is at three point two. And if you look at this, this obviously speaks to what Carrie said, that, you know, middle school was kind of left, left alone due to renovations, and we're, we're going to target that towards the end of this year and beginning of next year with, uh, Chromebook cards, and hopefully we'll, we'll get the lab replacement funded too. So, okay, so goals for next year, uh, we wanna continue replacing or updating the computers. We have, we still have a lot of computers that are eight-plus years old, uh, still in use, very slow, in use. Uh, we're gonna continue improving the wireless access. This will be very important with the Chromebooks. And we did the initial, initial deployment. We're about ninety percent coverage, but there's still dead spots here and there that we keep, keep finding and not plugging. Uh, we're gonna continue interactive wide-port deployment. Ideally, we'll have one in every, in every teaching classroom. Uh, increase Google Chromebook deployment to support online textbooks and upcoming PARC testing. Procure cards for safe Chromebook storage at elementary schools. Um, the initial, the initial purchase of Chromebooks, the goal was to really distribute them four, five per classroom for the, uh, science tech box and, uh, sitting around. So I'm looking towards the end of this year to purchase cards so they can store them over the summer for charging and safekeeping. Uh, we're looking to update Microsoft licensing, uh, in office, reduce paper and toner use with combination of new device management software and print policy settings. This thing fell off because it was not funded, uh, during this year. Uh, paperless office was the same way, and, um, technology integration specialist and, uh, part-time IT assistant, uh, in the request again. Uh, that is critical at this point. We keep adding a lot of technology. We're now at close to fourteen hundred devices, uh, in the district, and, uh, we still have a lot of staff members who are struggling with it. They're not necessarily struggling with the, with the technology, but they're struggling on how to implement that, uh, with their curriculum and teaching. And that, uh, technology integration specialist is a teaching position that would work with staff members to help them integrate what we have and use it in a better way. Uh, we wanna maintain technology replacement cycle plan and continue to provide training. Budget request reflects our goals to improve the use of infrastructure and enhance the learning of our students in accordance with the district technology plan for twenty-first century learning. We encourage anybody to stop by and take a look at the stuff in use.
Thank you very much. And as always, as I say, Bakir is very ambitious, and sometimes I look at the goals and say, I don't know. But you always seem to pull it off, even when, I know a lot of things were put off from last budget that, um, how many, you have one assistant right now?
My assistant.
Is that full-time?
Yes.
All right, full-time. And there's no other support in tech?
Uh, we have, we have two Sipon positions, one at the high school, one in the middle school, and I have to say for both of them. For Gina and Derek, they are, they are great. They're great help. We would be, we'd be in a tough position without two of them, so...
And part of that is, um, help with the staff?
Yep.
So...
For the most part, they, they handle basic, basic needs.
So you're proposing to keep that the same?
That stays the same. This is really a, a new position. It's, it's a teaching position more than a technology position. The way I presented it is, uh, a part-time IT assistant and part-time, uh, technology integrator. It really would be a full-time technology integrator that would help out load software, update something while they're at the teacher's desk. But it is a person who would sit in the classroom with the teacher, observe what they're doing, help them out, say, okay, you can do this, you can do that, and it's gonna save you X amount of time, and you can do this to improve what your students are doing, uh, with Chromebooks, with whatever technology is available.
Emphasizing the fact that, that it's someone who's also a teacher and, and can spearhead the, the, the transition to the, the digital classroom, really. And, and it's not just, it's, it's not IT support as much as it's IT support, and then also, um, part of the, part of the curriculum and, and part of the instructional team as well, and, uh, spreading how to best use the technology to engage kids.
The school committee's looking at that as well, because, as you know, we've gone to the, um, the iPads. I mean, eventually, we'd like to get rid of all of this. It's, it's...
Yeah.
It's such a waste. It really is, when...
Agreed.
I mean, there's certain things that you want, a hard document that you can scribble over if it's a draft, but...
We've, we've done a lot already with Xerox copiers.
You have, yeah.
Paul and me, kind of, when she started off, started the initiative to eliminate some of that cost, which is huge for paper and printing for toner. So first, first part was, uh, replacing the, um, uh, RECO copiers with Xerox and defaulting them to duplex printing, so they print both sides of the page, and, you know, things like that. Secure print, where teachers can send a print job to the copier, and it sits there waiting to them, for them to plug in their password, uh, while they're at it, wasting, doesn't waste paper. Cause most of the time, what was happening, someone would send a hundred-page print job, and someone would just take it, put it aside, it gets lost, it gets printed again. So, uh, and additional pieces of software would, would handle some of that stuff, where if someone sends a hundred-page document to a small printer that costs a fortune to print to, this thing would come up and say, well, you really should be printed to the copier, or would you consider printing this in duplex and things like that? So it would, it would save, it would pay for itself.
Yeah, I think those, those were a great investment for a lot of reasons.
Cause we can, we can spend the money in better, better ways.
Each of the schools have the same type copier?
Uh, I think mostly, mostly Xerox now. Isn't there like one or two RECO copiers?
We have one RECO machine left, if that's...
I think there's still one at the high school, too, in the AD office.
The, the one that we own?
That we own, yeah.
That we own. But on lease, we only have one RECO on lease. But these type machines here are, are in all the buildings now, so that'll be a big help in...
Have we actually saved money this year by bringing those in?
I would, I would love to give you the data. However, I can't because the software wasn't funded.
That's...
It, what I'm, what I'm really looking for is, uh, is a piece of software that would handle that. That would actually, all the print jobs go through the server, all the copies go through the server, and the software tracks each user, what they're doing, why they're doing it, and, uh, it would provide how many pages were printed duplex and whatnot, and, uh, what was saved. We'd have a report, report, actually, to compare, uh, what was before and, uh, what we've done with it.
Adam Shear?
But there's definitely, if, if I look at the copiers, a lot of the stuff is being printed duplex, uh, which, which a lot of, like, good forty percent is printed duplex now. So people printing manuals, start printing hundred pages, they actually print fifty, so it helps.
With the increase of the technology that we're purchasing, you said we have fourteen hundred pieces of equipment, and in your department, what's the turnaround if something should? You know, if you get a, a... should, you know, if you get a person calling and saying, you know, "My computer's frozen," or, what's the turnaround time?
Usually same day.
It is, so you're okay with that as far as getting back and being able to fix?
We prioritize.
Yep.
We have, we use a help desk, it's a help desk that I implemented a few years back. Teachers log in, submit a ticket, gets into the queue. If it's down, it's the only computer we put in a higher priority, handle it as soon as we can.
Yeah.
You know, I, go ahead. No, I think we're. I can't emphasize enough, and this has been experienced across all districts that are starting to, you know, emphasize Chromebooks as their specific piece of technology. It's very, from IT perspective, very friendly, because a lot of it, because it's web-based, a lot of the updates that Bakir would typically have to do happen automatically, and so it's, and because the devices themselves are such low-cost that if, you know, you have one that's defective, they're relatively cheap to replace, and then they're just, the kids can access any of them, it's, you know, you don't have to load any software on them or anything.
The point I was going to say, too, is I think Bakir was really proactive with getting the atomic learning piece also that kind of empowers, saves help desk tickets, but also teachers are taking upon themselves to research in such great software, what they can integrate, how they can integrate, all those troubleshooting things, so that he can focus on, as they do very economically, on the real problems.
The atomic learning, if you're not familiar with it, it contains a wealth of video-based training resources from Smartboards, apps and projectors, Microsoft Office, Chromebooks, iPads, iPhones, almost anything related to education and technology use is there, and it's done well. And we can, if anybody's interested in the community, we can actually provide a generic account for anybody in the community, for parents, all free.
Very step-by-step, it's excellent.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. So, you still anticipate needing those two STIP positions?
Yes.
At the veterans' school, there was, or actually probably every elementary school, there was a big expense a while back for netbooks.
They're still being used.
They're not in the library anymore.
No, but they're being used in cards, they're being used, it's spread around.
So, you took them out of the library, that table?
What we did is they're now, I think in their fifth or sixth year, I can look it up, and I'll give you the details. Last year, the year before, they started running really slow with all the Windows updates and antivirus, so we did a hundred and seventy of those. We did a conversion to Linux operating system, which is really slick, it's fast, boots up in about forty seconds. So, that gave them sort of a new life, and they started using them with Chrome. It goes right online on the internet.
So, at the vets, they're out of that static position in the library and on cards instead?
Correct. Yeah, there was only like a ten, ten units set up in the library that didn't really go anywhere, because people were looking to bring an entire class, and that didn't really work out. But there is about seventy-four, seventy-five netbooks, netbooks, still being used.
And what is the job description of coordinator of system software?
X2.
That's a full-time position, X2?
That is a full-time position. X2, all the state reporting. I don't know if there's anything else that Chrissy does.
State reporting, updates, report, I have a demographic report that you pulled today as well.
Does that position go out and support classroom teachers in any?
It's not, it's really not a technology position per se, she does not work with us. She reports directly to Mr. Tempesta, and she works only on data, like, I'll give an example, if someone needs student data export for another application, she can provide that.
Does that position go to teachers at certain schools to help them or instruct them in working on X2?
It's not an instructional, she does provide at orientation along with Bakir and things like that. New teachers coming in.
New teachers to learn X2.
We show, she's there to enroll them, show them the ropes, but it is, it's more a central office function, you know, support.
Any other questions?
Jeff, you're Bakir. I'd like to ask Saugus High School Principal Michael Hashem to come to the table, talk about Saugus High School.
That's number 10.
First, I'm going to go through the school improvement plan goals. I just want to state some of those, or most of those, to give you some idea of why we shaped the budget the way we did. So, I'm going to paraphrase, I'm not going to read these word by word. First goal is to foster a positive school culture and promote staff collaboration, develop a sense of shared responsibility among the faculty, students and administration. Second is to prepare and propose a needs-based budget, which is what we're doing today. Third is to strengthen the overall sense of safety and security for all students and faculty. And then we get to the achievement goals, to achieve and meet the MCAS gap-having targets, to reduce the dropout and graduation rates, to reduce the dropout rate and improve the graduation rate, to continue to expand the AP course offerings at the high school, to identify common assessments, the district determine measures, to expand community and educational partnerships, and to prepare staff for the transition to the PARC assessment. So, those were the goals that the school council came up with, faculty came up with, I came up with, and they became part of our school improvement plan. And these are the goals, these are the priorities of how I develop the budget that I'm proposing tonight. So, with that, one of the big goals when we put the budget together was to develop a twenty-first century learning environment, and that, of course, deals with technology. But the first case of that is, and I'm going to go off the budget a little bit on this one, in the best-case scenario, we're talking about a new high school here. We're going to work on the SOI again and try to get that, but that's not necessarily the reality we live with, and it's certainly not the reality of the next couple generations of graduates at Saugus High School. So, we have to do things in the meantime to try to provide that twenty-first century environment. Second tier of that would be to update all the science labs, which Mr. Woods could go on and on about, and if he wants to, he's welcome to, but it's certainly to update all the science labs to meet that standard. That's something that NEAS came back at us with. That's something we're putting our students a little bit behind as far as not having the twenty-first century learning experience. A third tier of trying to phase that in, and probably the most reasonable tier, but it's a big-ticket item, would be if we could retrofit three classrooms, one in biology, one in chemistry, and one in physics, to meet the needs of the twenty-first century learning environment, to get three of them up and going, then we at least would be able to introduce to our students that state-of-the-art instructional experience. So, that's something that would probably cost between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars to do, and I talked to Mr. Tempesta about it, I talked to Mr. Woods about it, I've talked to everybody about it. Our priority on doing something like that would be to make sure that as much of we put into it as possible could be transferable to a new building if it was to come into the works. That aside, what we're sort of doing right now, and what we're trying to deal with right now, and this is where the Chromebook argument comes up, and the first instinct of purchasing Chromebooks in a technology are the PARC assessments, and I respect that, but I do also agree with what some of you said tonight, and that's not the end-all, be-all, and that's not the only reason we should be getting the technology. In my school specifically, the one thing that the three Chromebook cards that we have right now allow us to do is to bring those cards into the science labs and provide virtual labs using those Chromebooks. So, those are techniques that we can use to sort of circumvent the fact that we have an older classroom. And the other reason for the Chromebooks and all the other technology are, we have a lot of the online components, and I know that when Ms. Robbins and Mr. Woods were talking about the online component of all the textbooks, when we're moving towards textbooks now, and I'm going to say it again, when you're moving towards textbooks now, about between five and eight years ago, the textbooks were the textbooks, and they threw in the electronic resources. Right now, they're really phasing it out altogether. In fact, they're not just doing it to be green, they're not just doing it to be state-of-the-art, they're doing it to make the curriculum adaptable no matter what the standards are. If they had done it, if we had the ability of doing it twenty years ago, right now, the algebra textbooks that we're talking about being outdated wouldn't necessarily be outdated because we could reshuffle the content areas around to meet the needs of the new curriculum. So, that being said, that's where it's going, and that's why we have to have all those resources available to the teachers, and it's instructional. And that goes along to what Bakir was talking about, the integration specialist. Our teachers are great, I'm pleased with all the teachers that I have at the high school, I'm pleased with all the teachers I've worked with throughout the system, and a lot of them grew up in this IT world, and they get that. But the problem, unless you've been specifically instructed on how to use the technology components in a high school classroom or in a middle school classroom, in an elementary school classroom, you do run into the problems of teachers being trepidatious about trying those new things, because when all things fall apart, they fall back to where their comfort zone is. And the comfort zone would be not to use the technology if it doesn't work well for them. And that's where the position Bakir was talking about, which would be that integration specialist, I think that was the terminology he used. Those, that would be somebody that could work with the staff to try to integrate the virtual lab, so that a teacher who's used to doing a biology lab, you know, with the, physically mixing the stuff, to go to a virtual lab and have a comfort zone. So, that's, that's the twenty-first century learning environment that I'm looking to promote. That being said, we do have textbook needs, whether you want to call them textbooks in the traditional sense or electronic textbooks, the big, and either Mr. Woods or Mr. Sullivan could explain in detail why, we do need to revamp the math books. I'm not just saying that because I came from the math curriculum area, it is, it is a subject area that is fallen behind as far as the textbook purchases, and so now it's time that it really, it's getting towards the dire time. I know everybody wants to come up to these budget presentations and talk about a wish list. This really isn't a wish list. Even the things that I think people would constitute out there as wishes, they're not really wishes. They're things that we, we need to do in order to have that twenty-first century classroom and to be competitive with every other school system and every other community and put our kids in a good way. So, that being said, we need the math textbooks now, there's a social studies component that we, if we partner them up, I know that we could get a better deal with putting the math and the social studies textbooks and start to revamp the social studies as well. We also need world language, and we also need to start talking about some of the electronic resources that are coming there. So, there's going to be that decision that Mr. Woods was talking about earlier was, do we even want all the hard copies of the textbook or not? Maybe that's a savings we could have, but we certainly need to expand our textbooks. The other things we need to do is talking about the high-stakes exams and preparing our students for the high stakes exam. That being said, we have the district determine measures that we're using, and this is again where the technology component comes in. We want our district determine measures to mirror whatever the assessment is that we have. If it's MCAS, it's MCAS, if it's PARC, it's PARC. If it's SATs, it's SATs, if it's AP, it's AP. If somebody comes up with a new assessment down the line, that's what we have to model going forward, so. The other thing we need to do to prepare them is to promote some of the pre-AP strategies that we also funded over the last few years through our TT. We sent a lot of students into pre-AP training, and one of the reasons was, what we would hope for, and I can speak specifically of Mr. Bruno, myself, and Mr. Woods, is we hoped at one point, the high school and the middle school, we'd get involved with this MEMS program to promote some of the academic rigor and some of the critical thinking strategies in our schools. So, we sort of took that one, and we actually have our pre-AP classroom, and we're in pretty good shape as far as some of the staff that have been, gone through that professional development. Tomorrow, when they go to the vertical teams, they'll have vertical team meetings, so the, sort of a train-the-trainer model, so the people that went to the professional development are going to come back to their buildings, and they're going to share that with the people that didn't. So, we have those AP strategies. That's going to lead us hopefully to a transition to become a MEMS school. Hopefully, we just had our site visit, and that's something we're really looking at. That being said, the reason for that is to open and increase our AP enrollment, and I think, I know, I heard Mr. Woods say this before, I'm sure I've said it before in front of the school committee, I've certainly said it in front of parent groups, so this isn't going to be the first time somebody's heard this. I know that people are saying that not every child is ready for an AP course, and I do agree with that, and not every child is ready for an AP course. But we're sending ninety percent of our students to college, over ninety percent of our students to college. When they leave us in June, if they weren't ready for an AP course in May, in June, when they graduate, the reality is, in September of two thousand and fourteen, every high school graduating senior that goes to a college is about to take four or five AP courses. So, when you're preparing for college and career readiness, the reality is, this is an experience that we really want to open up and expand to our classrooms, and that's why we're partnering with the middle school and make sure everybody's on board for that And now, I'm going to get to two of the areas where I'm going to talk about where it does, has more of a budget impact, and it does go to that list, I think, that you've got as far as some of the new stuff. I really want to improve the dropout rate and the graduation rate, improve both of those. So, two of the, two of the positions that I've asked for was, one was a guidance counselor slash adjustment counselor at the high school, and the other one was a, what I titled to be a dropout resource teacher or dropout prevention staff. And that dropout prevention staff would target the at-risk students, provide short-term academic services and work on credit recovery. When Mr. Grabowski asked Ms. Robbins the question, you know, what would you say, we always champion what we do well, this is the area that I'm concerned with, that we don't necessarily do well. I'm not, we have a group of, we have a lot of at-risk kids in the school community, and this would be a proactive, proactive way of trying to address some of their problems before they become disciplinary problems. This isn't the alternative room that we were talking about at the high school, this is a short-term situation where if we can get kids who are coming back into school after either a suspension or a leave, they can transition through this, this resource teacher. If we're having a person who's having a hard time trying to deal with credit recovery, this is a place for them to go. So, we have that population in the school system that we just don't, that gets missed along the way because we're focused on the AP or focused on the special ed. We don't necessarily focus on those kids that have trouble in a traditional classroom. So, this would be a short-term resource to try to get the kids back into the swing of things and get them back on their feet, and not just let them fall through the cracks and drop out or not graduate. So, that's why I'm asking for those. The last one on my, as far as has major budget implications, would be the safety. I'm asking for, I think, I think it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for safety. If you go to the high school, and I talked with Bakir, and he got one group of people to come out to do a overview of what we need, we have another company coming in to do the same type of thing, and that is where we need security cameras, where we need updates on visual surveillance, monitoring, even fixing the front vestibule in the main office. Those type of things all have to be dealt with for security reasons. It's the reality we live in. It's, you know, my first goal is to foster a positive school culture. None of that is possible if safety is a concern. So, while, you know, I, you lose sleep over it because you look at the budget and say, "I want all of it to go to curriculum," or "I need most of it to go to at-risk students, so we need to improve AP scores." The bottom line is, none of it is going to get done if nobody feels safe in the building, if everybody's looking over their shoulder. Is it going to be the cure-all? Absolutely not, but it's going to, it's going to, it's going to affect school culture if we, if they can have a sense of safety. And I think we need it. I think we drastically, we are woefully prepared for, you know, any kind of visual monitoring, we need to repair the locks. There's a laundry list of things that need to be done to the building, such as like making sure all the locks are fixed. They are, but that has to be something that keeps upgrading all the time. So, again, security and a security system is a area of critical need, it's not a wish list anymore, it's not something I want as well. And the other area, and I don't even know if I, I didn't even necessarily put it on this, and it's going to get addressed in a little while when the athletic director comes up here, is that we need to, we need to hopefully fund the athletic part of the budget a little bit, and I know we put in for another, I think it's thirty thousand dollars for a line item for the athletics to try to reduce the users' fees. And I'll say this, there's, my mentality is, I don't call any of these things extracurricular, they're co-curricular activities, because when you're talking about the at-risk students, you're talking about even the general students. If we don't offer them something to do after school, then we're really letting them down. So, it's part of the school day is to extend it out. You know, Ms. Riley was talking about having, you know, expanding the education process outside of the. outside of the traditional school day. That's something that this could do. So, allowing access to more students to participate on the athletic field would be a huge priority as well. And I know it seems like, when you're pitting it up against a math classroom or an English classroom, it seems like, again, a wish. But if it's going to get that kid in the math classroom to participate in that sport, it's no longer a wish. All right? I think I covered the areas and I'm just going to double check right now. I think I covered the areas of what we're talking about. I mentioned the social studies textbooks, the math textbooks, the security. These are the items that are above what was on last year's budget.
Can we finally take that steel door off the wish list?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. The steel door.
It's still on.
No, no.
It was done.
The steel door shouldn't be on the wish.
It's on your maintenance list.
Sure, hold on, hold on. If it is.
Take it off.
If it is.
Page 59.
Hold on, give me a second, give me a second. Which, 59? 59, hold on.
One D.
The steel door has to do with the chemical storage. We mandated to have a steel door on there and just so.
Check it out.
People understand what they're talking about. That was finally done.
My bad, it should be off. It's off. I apologize for that. My bad. The steel door is off, so we can cross that one off the list.
Oh, at least one's off the list.
Absolutely successful. We accomplished something here tonight. We can cross the steel door off the list. That was an oversight effort. I apologize for that. That got done last year.
Thanks work, Mr. Hashem.
Got something done. Any other questions? I'm sure there are.
I definitely have a question. No, when it comes to the safety part.
Yep.
And I was looking at, I think it was in high school safety, security, it was $135,000.
That was the, the thing was when the, this was something to be perfectly honest with you. And I think everybody knows why it came up as a recent event. It was certainly not something when I transitioned into the high school as the principal. It was not something that was, you know, right there in front of us. And so, it wasn't part of my transition. It wasn't necessarily something my school council was thinking about day one, but they certainly were thinking about it day 60. So, as we were putting the budget together, I was in a rush to do this. So, we actually got one company out. So, that number is based on one spec.
I guess my question is, and it would go back to Mrs. Robbins with the cameras and stuff, I think maybe this is more of a district-wide thing.
Absolutely.
That we need to look at than just specifically.
We are looking at that.
Just the high school.
No, absolutely.
Maybe something you can collaborate and put it all together.
I have no.
This was really a sort of a short notice, so we got one vendor to come out. Actually, Mr. Hashem and I have a meeting with the vendor who installed a Belmonte surveillance system.
Next week.
Next week. And the goal with that is really to tie in what's already at Belmonte and expand and set up a system that can go district-wide.
Okay.
And some of this did spiral off when we had a principal's meeting and I think Mr. Tempest had come back. The high school probably is one of the further behind schools because some of the other schools did get some security equipment through PTAs.
What, I think.
It was just built in 1954.
I know.
Still settling.
John. So, and we are trying to do that. We're also trying to do that with the town as well. Because one of the things that's excellent, that really came to light with the Belmonte system is how it's server-based and you can retrieve images and do searches and queries and things like that and it's expandable to different cameras in the modulator. And if we have the same type of, everything else is separate in each building. It's all proprietary, can't really work together well. So, that's the quote that they're pursuing. And we also hope, you know, in time, with police and fire, who've been great, and we have a meeting coming up soon as well, that potentially we're looking at other types of, what other communities are doing in terms of safety and not just, obviously, more timely because of recent events, but also, we were looking at it anyway. And we'll do what makes sense, but we definitely have the whole district in mind before. We would never put in a system, one that wouldn't be expandable to all schools, but also in the case, as was alluded to with Mr. Hashem, that couldn't be portable as well if we were to get the new school. So, we would just be looking at labor costs to put it. We want to be able to expand it and contract it if that's the case and put cameras from one school in another school or vice versa, so.
There was a community grant that the town and schools collaborated on a couple of years ago. We didn't receive it, but it had to do with safety or targeted areas.
Safe routes to schools?
No, this was something different that had to do with, and we ended up, it was, we wanted it for the veteran school and the Waybright School because they were constantly being vandalized and the police had a lot of, it really was, it was driven by police. But unfortunately, we weren't chosen for that grant.
Well, we still have that survey that the police did three or four months ago, more about lighting and other things that need to be done. That was going to be, one of my questions is, camera system and recording devices, I would assume, would be borne by us, but new entry vestibule and properly locking doors for our entries, in my opinion, should be building maintenance through the town.
Could be.
You know, I don't think we should be budgeting for structural repairs or repairs that would be done of a different kind of aspect that should be, at least talk to the town about putting that on their list.
Well, that was, that was sort of, that was at the very end of it and that was on the budget maintenance, sorry, the building maintenance list.
Right.
But it all depends on what we're talking about too. If the vestibule is, it needs to be reconfigured, then definitely that would go into building maintenance and/or a capital depending on the amount of work. But if we're just talking about new buzzes buzzing in or security cameras to see. If it's something like that, then that falls under.
The vestibule part would be a configuration because I would model the front entrance of the high school to be more similar to that of the middle school.
And the same with the repairing of the fire alarm system.
Oh, yeah.
It's a town initiative.
That has been on the table for quite some time and the town has not funded the repairs that are really needed there.
To continue going, looking at your budget here, correct me, your budget template.
Yep, the template one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page, I don't know, line item 58. Am I reading that correctly? You're looking for $1 million in.
In what?
Science supplies?
That, okay, you want to, that was the, that was the.
We're looking for a $2 million plus increase in our total budget. Science supplies is a $1 million, $17,000?
I was looking for $1 million last year.
That's correct.
And I will continue to come before the committee and ask for $1 million until I see nine new labs, however they're configured, whether it's at the existing high school, whether they're at a brand-new high school. The thing you have to keep in mind, even a brand-new high school, we are still talking four to six years before that happens. If we were to invest $1 million into science labs for six years of students, I don't consider that to be extravagant. If we only got six years' use out of a building to extend the life of it until a new one was built. We didn't get this last SOI. The town, in its wisdom, turned down the proposal to match funds with the school building We have issues at the high school that need to be addressed. We are not providing those students with 21st century learning environment in the science labs. So, whether that's our responsibility, the town's responsibility, it's somebody's responsibility. And I wasn't going to speak about this tonight, but it was brought up, so I will. It's something that I'm going to keep asking for, you know? And, you know, the answer of, well, we're going for a new school, that simply doesn't make, doesn't make the need go away. A new school does not make the need for new science labs go away. And I tried to say that in 2012 and that fell on deaf ears, so.
So, that $1 million is not included in your $2 million, some odd thousand dollar request?
Some heated discussions as you have to, but I think the model that they put out, you know, a portion of that money to kind of cycle people through model labs. And again, the portability and transferability component of that too, so that most of the lab equipment we would be seeking and things like that, should we go to another school, when we did, they could be transferred to another school. And obviously, we'd go with the most recent ads built in the new school anyway to get reimbursement. But it wouldn't be lost, I guess. And I agree, you know, coming from high schools that had not, in running high schools, one with very dated labs, one, a brand-new school, and we went to, seeing the benefit of instruction and kids being able to use active stations all the time and teachers inspired to use those stations all the time, even if it's physics and not necessarily like chem and your heavy wet lab type of thing. But it really makes a marked difference in their experience. And it's also, to echo the point, and to really, you know, we're talking about our kids, Sogas kids, who are competing against, they are competing against people within the state, but they're also competing against people for spots in our state universities and other private universities, against our neighboring towns, okay, who are better prepared and are taking more lab sciences. So, that's, you know, I underscore the sentiments of Mr. Woods.
I do feel the need just to acknowledge that the science staff that we have are doing an excellent job, providing the best possible education that the students could ask for, given what they're working with. I mean, they are, they are doing a lot of the pre-AP because they're one of the active groups that went to the pre-AP training that has, that have taught them a different, you know, process towards instruction. So, they're one of the groups in the high school that has taken that probably most to heart. So, they are doing a great job.
But not every student gets the same experience in the science.
Well, within our school, within our school, with the pre-AP, with the pre-AP strategies and the pre-AP instructional strategies, we've tried to do, and I'm somebody who taught an AP class and I'll take the blame for this, I didn't think of it myself, but when I taught an AP class, there were two aspects of teaching an AP class. There was the, teach them the content and then teach, taught them how to think in the same manner that an AP student would think. And I never thought to transition that down to the lower classes, the classes before the AP classes, the pre-AP classes. When you go to the, this pre-AP training, what they've taught our instructors to do, our teachers to do, is don't underestimate the students that would not be traditionally the accelerated, the honor students. Throw those ideas out there to all the classes. The pre-AP strategy that we're using at the high school are for all the biology classes, for all the Algebra I classes, for all the ninth-grade ELA classes. They're not for the honors classes, they're for all the classes. And what we're doing is asking our kids to think through larger problems, that rigor isn't about assigning 75 questions, it's about assigning three or four quality questions and questions that feed on each other, so they go sequentially through the process. Is that a different, is that a different way to teach? Absolutely. That's why these teachers went to training. That's why we're taking time tomorrow to have vertical team meetings with the ones that went to the training so that they can collaborate with their group, so that all the teachers can piggyback on their training. And the Common Planning Times has done a wonderful job of doing that where they have teachers sharing best practices. And I could tell you from observations, at both the high school and the middle school, that I've gone into classrooms where one teacher's gone to the training, one teacher hasn't gone to the training, and I'm not sure you could tell who did, based on the fact that they've worked so hard collaboratively to make sure that the one who didn't go caught up, so to speak. So, I think that was a professional development opportunity that everybody really embraced. And that's where I think we have to, we have to look at that as, that's for all students. One of the questions they asked us on the training, and Mr. Woods went to one of the administrators' training on pre-AP, who's a pre-AP student? Anybody. Anybody could be. And for us to say that there's a seventh grader in the middle school right now that couldn't eventually take an AP course, I think we're selling them short. I'm not sure where that stemmed from.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I mean, a million dollars, if this is almost like an all or nothing question.
No, that was, that was.
No, 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 I'm saying, but if, realistically, what can you live with is the type of, is the thing I'm asking, you know? Because if you're asking me a million or nothing.
$250,000 to $300,000.
Well, that's where, that's where I sort of tiered it for you. I mean, the thing I want the most is a new high school. The thing I want, the next thing in line, the first, the biggest ticket item right now of my, the school's lacking a lot of things physically. It's an old school, like you said. It's been around for a long time. I need to, the new school would benefit everybody. That being said, I'm not going to lie, and as a former math teacher, I'm not going to say, well, the math classrooms are the ones that need to be updated. Brendan's not going to say the English classes are the one. The reality of the argument is that the classroom that is being cheated the most from a 21st century learning experience are the science classrooms. So, that's why, outside of a new school, the next thing you could do is get me new science labs. The next thing you could do is get me a science lab in each of the three main sciences so that when we have those activities, we can sort of get the teachers and rotate them in, so at least all of the classrooms have some experience in a state-of-the-art science classroom. So, everybody gets a taste of it. That way, when they go to a college, they have had access to those updated technologies. Because that's what, that's what we're really lacking is when you take the kids who have a science classroom in a 1950 science lab compared to the students like Mr. Tempest was saying, who have a science classroom in a 2011, 2012, 2014 science lab, there's a disparity. Sorry.
Just two other questions, small amount.
Are we back on that?
Yeah. Line item 118, student scheduling.
118.
You're asking for, I mean, it's only thousands of dollars. I mean, you're asking for 150% increase in your student scheduling from 4,000 to 10,600?
Hold on a second. I'm going to have to review on that one. I apologize for this.
No.
Yeah, no, I've got it.
Okay.
The upsell on that is one of the things, and I'm not sure where that's going to get funded of, and that was one of the last additions I had to my budget, it was actually right at the end. I put in that, in that line item, if you go to page 41, that's where I approximated the cost of teaching, of administering 400 students, that would be all the juniors and sophomores, approximately, the PSAT testing on Wednesday. If we, if you're a MIMZI school, one of the things that the AP uses is AP potential. The AP potential is assessed through the PSAT exam. So, in order for us to be able to get the data to drive where we want to push our students' directions, they would require us to take the PSATs for every, I believe it's every sophomore and junior in the school. So, to do that, to require them to take the PSATs, the easiest, the way to do that would be to have it on Wednesdays and if we have it on the Wednesday admission, we'd have to pay for that.
At a significant discount.
At a discount. I put this number in there just doing the quick math.
So, it's not just September scheduling for the rest of the school year, as it sounds?
Right. The rationale, and I was trying to find a line item to put it in, my rationale behind why to put it in there is that the PSATs measure AP potential and the AP potential is going to affect how we schedule our students. I mean, that's, that was my, that was my logic.
Is that testing an assessment? No?
You can add it.
Yeah, I mean, if anybody's got a better.
Isn't that a fee-based program to take the test? They pay a fee?
They pay a fee to take the PSAT testing on Saturdays. In order for us to assess them and make it mandatory for all of our sophomores and juniors to take it, we would have to pay that fee, but like Mr. Tempest said, at a reduced rate.
So, we, so instead of them paying on Saturdays now out of their pocket to take it.
Correct.
We're going to mandate to take them and we'll pay the fee.
Mandates, mandates true, but the rationale behind it is, we want to get, this was, we're going to use the PSATs as a diagnostic tool to try to schedule our students moving forward and to set program shifts for our students moving forward. So, we're using that data at that point.
It benefits them as well because, as you know, most parents emphasize, take the PSATs so that when you take the SATs, you have a little.
No, absolutely. And we strongly encourage all our students to take it. But this would, this would not only take it for their own benefit.
Right.
From a, you took the test, you practiced the SAT. The benefit. The, the benefit that the public might not know until tonight is that it's a data source we can use for AP potential, which we can then work with the kids to schedule them moving forward.
I mean, when you look at our, at our PSATs from last year, which Mr. Sullivan and I just got, I'm off by a couple, but I think our sophomore class of 200 and, 200 plus,
Yeah, 200 plus.
64 students took PSATs. That's not enough of our kids participating in PSATs on a voluntary Saturday base.
This voluntary costs money.
But philosophically, if only 64 are taking it and you've got 140 that you're going to make take it, are the results you're going to get going to be statistically important? Or are they just going to blow it off and say, I got to take it, so I'm just going to blow through?
You're always going to, you're always going to have, we have MCAS tests right now, which determine whether a kid graduates high school or not, and some of them don't take it as seriously as we'd like them. Would they all take it seriously? I'm sure not. But if we make it available to everybody within the confines of our school day and we pay for it, there's no reason not to take it. Right now, we're giving them reasons not to take it. They have more reason not to take it. It's a Saturday, it's costing me money. We've got two very good reasons not to take it, and our reason for taking it was to practice for the SATs. Now we're saying, it's practice for the SATs, it helps you, it's going to help us get a read on where your academic potential is, and if we put it on the Wednesday, all the negatives of cost and, I don't want to do it on a Saturday, that disappears.
It also becomes an institutional expectation that you, you take it as part of the instructional program.
And the school system.
It's what a sophomore does, it's what a junior does.
And the school systems that have become Mimsy schools, they find that it's, it becomes the reality of the situation.
Did you have it at your high?
I did. So we did this exact same thing at Milford High School when I was there, and we fought, fought to get it in, and it was, I can't say how wonderful it was for every student. And you've got to keep in mind too, the thing with the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative is, they are looking to stretch kids. So you, you always have your, say, five or 10% are high achievers who are always going to be there. They're looking to show, as, as others have just spoken about, the potential that they see in them. What this does, and particularly the statistic by, by Mr. Woods right now, is if only a third, approximately, a third of the class is taking the test, and now the entire class is taking the test, there's two-thirds that will never know that, you know what, you, you score well, you're good at math, you're, you know, have you, did you know that you are, and that impact we had with kids of all abilities, kids who are reaching to go to Ivies who may not have, kids who were, you know, didn't, didn't think ever that they could take two APs in the same year, or three, you know? It has real, I mean, we, we increased our AP numbers by, by almost 60% in two years.
And some kids don't get that push behind from their parents to, you know, make them take the PSATs.
That's true.
And they don't know what they don't know. So you can't, you can't, you know.
They're working Saturday. I wonder how many even.
Would even know to take.
They're working Saturday, they can't get to the test. They can't, you know, we need, we need to know our clientele, and I commend your efforts on that, because it's a lot of additional work, you know, to.
I just want to underscore, I mean, Arthur's point when we were talking at the middle school level of, of taking, taking the, the kids who are, who are not at the extremes and moving them up, and that's, and that's what this is about.
One last question. A year, two years ago, we had a situation, very specific, wood shop. How are we, are we working on, I mean, I'm actually looking at some supplies, buying some kind of wood framing kit? Is that in conjunction with people working their hands and using the equipment in the workshop?
I can speak to that a little bit. Part of the money we've requested this year, we redesigned the program, we're looking at, we've done some, we've got a full-time teacher in there now, doing some really creative things with the kids, doing some guitar kits with the kids where they're starting and building them from scratch and, and putting them all together. The wood framing kits, if you go on to the digital newspaper that was just put out by our.
Mr. Sereno.
Mr. Sereno's class, the digital imaging class. I, I challenge you to take a look at the digital framing picture that's on his webpage, and tell me whether or not you are in a model or you are in a full-blown, stick-built home. We have the kids in the CAD course right now designing the house, they're using a kit that they've designed, and they're building a balsa model.
That's what.
Yeah, oh, it's hands-on.
Hands-on, that's what I wanted to say.
But when you look at the picture that, that Mr. Sereno put on his webpage of this house that stands.
Looks like a house.
Looks like a house.
It looks like a house. I mean, and the kids have done a complete scale model, we're expanding that. Part of the money in the request you're going to see for line items was for repair and maintenance of machines. One of the things that was brought to light when we brought the program back was that, you know, we've got a bunch of machinery in the high school, most of it, as Mr. Sereno pointed out, was original to the school in 1954. Some of that is usable, some of that is no longer usable. But I have actually put in, one of the requests was for repair and maintenance of existing machines. We did, we did a lot last year with the science department, repair and maintenance. I had requested money for microscopes, I was able to locate a company in New Hampshire, and for basically 10% of what I requested, get 48 microscopes put back to 100% serviceability. So we're looking at creative ways, and I think part of that is if you spend, you know, $5,000 on repair and maintenance of equipment, both in science and in the technology, that includes the wood shop, because that's under my, you know, area now. I think you'd see, you know, an awful lot of bang for the buck, so to speak, on having someone come in and professionally service and maintain it and set them up. So that's what we're looking to do. Yes, we are looking for supplies, we're expanding supplies, the program keeps growing, and it's growing in a way now that, that like Mr. Hashman I spoke about a couple of years ago, that's starting to transition it though, to move it to a design process, where they are building with their hands, but they're building with their minds first. They're designing it, and then they're building it.
Because I think that hands-on aspect of a wood shop where you're actually using bandsaws and things attracts another potential group.
It absolutely does.
Students who are not AP.
Falling under the college and career rating.
But I think they do like the design process too, because I think that they want to design the road.
Yeah, it goes hands-in-hand, because now you're also accessing kids who are working
with their hands and then learning, you know, math and, and some things that, you know, they may not be able to quite get it from a book, but they're manipulating things with their hands and then, and then learning about engineering.
And they're learning geometry in spite of themselves. They don't know that they're learning geometry, but they do.
And they might also learn a love of working with their hands in terms of wood and, you know, hammering.
It's college and career readiness, I think.
Because there was a time when we actually took a vote to continue as best as possible with the wood shop program.
Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I can stay with you.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Robert O'Leary to the table to discuss the athletic budget.
Was that? We don't have one.
We don't have one.
It's actually in the high school.
Is it in the high school?
Yeah, it's on the 10.
It's in the high school.
Forty-two, I think it's.
On forty, stats on 47, I believe. I follow this, stats on 42.
Forty-two?
Close to 43.
In conjunction with that, we do, I don't know if I gave everybody the proposed budget that we had at the last athletics subcommittee, but I have it. I can make sure every school committee member gets a copy of it.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that.
Yeah, I sent you one.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It was an attachment, but I'll send the other three members a copy of that.
And we do have an athletics subcommittee meeting coming up, so we could go over that, fine tune that.
I'll talk to Donna then.
Yeah, you just put it in with the school committee, we have the shared documents.
It's just a lot easier.
So, is, is stats are 43?
Forty-three, yeah. It starts with transportation. Just to go over some of the, you know, fixed costs that we have, on page 43 you can see, you have transportation, Healey Bus, and we also have some vans that, we have van drivers that drive the vans, that that falls into transportation. The coaches' salaries are part of our fixed costs, that's coaches and athletic trainer. You're looking at $166,000, total requested amount. Then contractual services, you're looking at the custodial salaries, police details, any, we had a cleanup of the locker rooms between the fall and the winter season, a cleaning company come in, that the MIAA suggests that we have everything cleaned, make sure that, you know, Lysol and whatever it is for sicknesses and stuff to get rid of. Game day officials, along with assigner fees, that, that is your referees, anybody working basketball game tables assigned by the MIAA. We have crowd control people at both at the rink and at basketball games, football games, ticket sellers, ticket takers, and all, all your sports have assigners of officials who get a fee in order so that the school pay that on top of your league fees, your MIA fees, your Cape Ann League fees. And then the last part of the budget pieces are the equipment and supplies, equipment that's for your reconditioning of football equipment from Rydell, any new equipment that needs to be purchased, anything that needs to be sent out to be fixed, football shoulder pads, hockey helmets, lacrosse helmets, lacrosse shoulder pads, anything we give the student athlete, especially with the concussion rules the way that they are, we have to have everything certified by the state and by the companies that they're able to be used. Some of our variable costs, you, I'm trying to put together a five-year uniform cycle so that we can start to replace some of our uniforms in more of a timely fashion, working with the booster clubs to see what they can offer us to help us out with that, with that aspect of the cost for us. Some of the field maintenance that we need to upkeep for ourselves. Mr. Grabowski asked everybody else what we're, you know, what we're doing poorly, and I would say that in the athletic department, the answer to that question is definitely our athletic fields. We play on some of the worst fields in the Cape Ann League. We need some help financially from the town to help us with maintenance of our fields, both football, baseball, lacrosse, soccer. Every, every field that we play on could use a, a boost from either grass seed or even some, some of the fields need to be revamped so that their regulation sizes. Your, your, the families need some help with the user fees, I don't think that's a secret to anybody. We need, we need to work together to come up with a way to lower the user fees so that we have more kids playing sports this year. We are in a new league in the Cape Ann League, so the costs are higher for us for transportation, league dues was a little higher, but we are down in our numbers, and I believe that this has to do mostly with the cost of the user fee and the fact that the free and reduced lunch kids are not getting the, the same break that they got in the past, and we're not getting those student athletes to play more than one sport. We can open it up, if anybody has any questions or concerns.
Oh, this whole budget is under the revolving account, so we're not talking about an appropriation at this point?
Right now, the only appropriation we get is from the LEA, and that's the 70.
The subsidy from the LEA is placed into the coaches' line item.
Coaches. But the other things aren't in the budget, correct?
That's correct.
And coaches are not fully funded, obviously, in that, just the LEA subsidy goes to that line item. We had estimated some time ago that it cost about $500,000 to run, per year, to run athletics. I don't know if that's still accurate, and I don't know if.
I, I've been putting together some paperwork for our subcommittee meeting, which was, we're thinking about trying to do tomorrow, but with sporting events being moved around and stuff, I'm not available tomorrow. So it's going to be sometime next week, and I'm doing a per-sport breakdown, and I would say that that number is probably closer to 400,000 than it is to 500,000 per sport. You know, depending on what you're talking for supplies, what you're allocating, but to me, I've learned from my mistakes, and, you know, it's like going to the grocery store. If you don't go every week and, and keep up with it, you're going to get slammed when you end up having to go. So you might as well put the supplies in there and spend the money every, every year, rather than in two years getting a supply line item of $90,000 where you could be spending, you know, 25, 30, 35 every year and keeping up with it and replacing equipment as we go.
By my calculations, it's anywhere between roughly 405 to 425 for athletics.
That seems like a fair number.
Doesn't it spend now?
That's what it costs to run the athletics program.
But I would say that.
A full athletics program or what we're spending now?
No, I would say that's what it costs to run a full athletic program. I would say what we're spending right now is probably closer to 350, 340, somewhere in that price range, but what it costs to run a full athletic program would be closer to Mr. Grabowski's number of 420, 400,000, somewhere in there. That's why we are asking for the money in the, you know, that you have in front of you to allocate more money to lower the user fee, so we can run the program that the kids deserve, you know, student athletes and the families that are paying for it deserve.
Any questions?
I just have one, just because I don't know the answer. Obviously, that's why I'm asking.
I would hope that's why we're asking.
You said ticket takers, what was the other you said when you were saying about the fee?
Game day officials.
Game day, well, no, not.
Those are referees.
Crowd people.
Crowd control. Game administrators.
Okay.
The workers.
Because we have been, the finance subcommittee has been, we're looking into what other districts charge to do these, you know, what they pay for ticket takers or thing.
Yep.
Can you just explain to me what a ticket taker is? Is that, I mean, is it?
It's exactly.
So why do you have to, I don't understand why there'd be a fee to have to get.
If you're asking me what.
Why do they get paid to take a ticket, is my question? Like, isn't that what we?
Because someone's handing them money to get, come in the door.
Well, there's two different people that, that actually, we'll take a football game, for instance, you're buying a ticket from one person.
Right.
And you're giving your ticket at the door to somebody else. If you're asking me if we can find volunteers, I would, I would not go down that route. I would ask you to not charge to get into games before you did that, because the volunteer schedule, you cannot get anybody that's going to work for free on a regular basis. You might get them for, you know, four or five times, but you're not going to get them every night, especially not during the winter season with basketball. We don't charge for ice hockey, but basketball and wrestling, or girls' basketball, boys' basketball, we're there three nights a week. And I just think that if you called around to most districts, most districts are paying those people, and the bottom line is responsibility, and you're putting it on them, that it's a job for them now.
It's a job, okay.
And we're not paying them enough to the, to the point where, you know, you're losing money, but if you were going to go down the route of volunteers, I would say you're better off not even charging to get in the games.
Well, last year, there was a suggestion at the athletics subcommittee of parents that had problems with user fees, to offer them those positions as a way to reduce or work off the user fees if they had a problem with coming up with the money. And I haven't seen if that's viable or not, I haven't seen anybody, our take of it, and I don't know if we've.
I, that, that's the first I've heard of it in, here in, in Saugus, but I, as I said earlier, I will learn from my mistakes, and again, you're gonna be taking people into jobs that may not be working every night, you're retraining people, you're better off not even charging to get in the games at that point than. You're better off not even charging to get in the games at that point than having to show people how, you know, it's done. And you might smile and say, "How hard could it be?" Not that it's difficult, but if you're using the same process every night, and, you know, we have it down to a science, thanks to Pola. Pola has got it down to a specific, you know, second that we can get the pennies, everything collected, put into a safe, deposit, everything else. To be training somebody else every single night would just be a nightmare, logistical nightmare.
But I think that that issue will be addressed at both finance subcommittee and athletics subcommittee.
Yes.
And what I believe is, once finance subcommittee has a recommendation or the information back, it'll go to athletics subcommittee.
Yep.
I have a question. We pay for police details at most games. What is this crowd control person that we're also paying $50 for?
Well, the crowd control person is mostly for when we have a conflict. If there's a hockey game and a basketball game on the same night, I'll be in one spot, crowd control person will be another. Game administrator, if basketball, if there's, you know, you have three games going on, you have a freshman game, a JV game, and a varsity game, do official forms, you're putting people in locker rooms. It's more than one person's job. You're tending to the teams that are coming home. You know, girls' freshmen might be in Ipswich, and they're coming home. They want to get into their locker room while there's a game going on. We try to keep everything locked, so the game administrator is just another set of hands. And again, if you called around to every district in the state, I would be surprised if there wasn't one that didn't have game administrators.
Some sports do require.
Right, well, the MIA does require you to have somebody on site. 99.9% of the time, that's me. The game administrator is in addition to the person who's on site, who's taking care of... If I'm there, and you're going... I know your next question is going to be, "If I'm there, why do we need a game administrator?" Well, the reason is, I could be off dealing with an unruly parent, and the referee may need to restart a clock or something like that. The game administrator is actually the person in charge of the building, even though I am there. I'm not, so to speak, the administrator. The person that's at basketball would be the game administrator. If I'm at ice hockey, I'm usually the game administrator at ice hockey.
So is the game administrator and crowd control, is one and the same?
They're one and the same. They're not... We'd never have two people, game administrator and crowd control, because that would be a third person on top of myself. Minimal the number of times that, at least at the basketball, that there's a police detail. Right, we're trying, you know, to...
What do we hire police details for?
Ice hockey, football. And before, we did hire them when we were in the Northeastern Conference, we did hire them for some certain games of the Northeastern Conference.
You sold for a certain amount of people you were expecting.
Yeah, also, if, yeah, crowd attendance, if we have a history with the other school, if there's something, you know, that we need to address. The Saugus police are great. They're there.
Hockey, they were always there.
Yeah.
Football, always there.
So at the rink, the hiring of a police detail is our responsibility, not the rink owner's responsibility?
Well, we do have a meeting, I have a meeting Friday morning with the other schools that are using Kazabowski this year, and one of the agenda items is that same question. You know, if we're paying for ice and he's keeping the gate, you know, whose responsibility really is it for police detail? In the past, it has been ours. He has security at the rink. They're not police officers. They are rink workers. I personally don't feel comfortable with our students, not just our student-athletes, but our students that are at the game and our families that are at the game, to be there without a police officer most nights. Saturday night, you didn't need a police officer, the Patriots were playing, and there weren't too many people there.
And several years ago, we did have, I think, one of the first or second years I was on the school committee, we did have a signed agreement, and I don't believe we've had a signed agreement since then.
Sorry, a signed agreement of who pays and who doesn't, or...
Between the athletic department and the rink operator.
No, we've had a signed... We do have a signed agreement.
You do have one?
A lease, sort of, a rental agreement.
You do have that?
Yes, that was signed, I believe it was a two-year... I think they've done it every two years. I've read it, and, you know, there's nothing in it that states police detail. It does state that he has security on site, but again, I don't feel comfortable with his security taking over. And again, we have game administrators for the most part, and, you know, always at least myself or another adult is there from high school.
We'll have, obviously, hopefully, we'll have a meeting next week. It's hard getting everybody's schedule to coincide.
The winter is kind of difficult.
Is that next Wednesday? Is that what you said?
No, he can't, Mr. Hashem, can't make it Wednesday and Thursday. We were going to have one tomorrow, but the athletic director can't make it tomorrow, so I'm having just a problem of making everybody's schedule fit. So I made it clear that we needed to have one by the 23rd, so hopefully, we'll have it, I guess, maybe next Tuesday.
That's not going to help for a decision on the 23rd.
Well, that's another issue that's...
It'll have to be put off to February.
I don't...
It'll have to be put off to February.
Yeah, because there's an issue about the money.
Are we allowed to meet during the school day?
Depends. Well, the first... I have to speak to Mr. Sereno first, because I think his schedule and my schedule are kind of the driving ones, and then we work our way down the food chain to see who can and who can't, you know? I don't want to make sure... I want to make sure that the school committee member and myself are taking...
Well, if you want the budget, they should probably make sure I'm available.
I mean, you can just do it Thursday by yourself.
So are there any other questions? No, awesome. We're probably going to hear from you in a while anyway, after the subcommittee meets, so we'll have follow-up then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If any other... That's all we have to present.
It's all for this evening, and our next set of presentations is scheduled for Thursday at 4:30.
No, 4 o'clock.
At 4:00.
4:06. It's 4:00. Is it 4:00? Is it posted for 4:00?
Yes, it's posted for 4:00.
Okay. 4:00 on Thursday.
Elementary.
The elementary, and that'll be all the elementary schools?
All the elementaries, Ballard and Curriculum as well, from Mr. Bruno over here.
I was going to ask, where does... Was every... Is that it for presentations besides Mr. Bruno?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
This is going to be more of a recap of things that have already been said, because it's all been integrated into the school improvement plans that we've got.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Oh, yeah. Good.